I'll tell you after.
Good evening, Dyson, welcome to the-
We're talking in progress.
Town of Dyson Planning Board, regular meeting and public hearing this Wednesday, May 21st, 2025. I like how you keep both years on there, just in case. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I was supposed to scatter out and make sure that they get their hats on. Alright, thank you. So, I just want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting being video recorded for cable broadcast. And to confirm the next meeting, regular meeting on June 4th, 2025. And remind everyone that's the beginning of our summer schedule. So that what that means is we have one month, what we have for the next June through September, I believe we have one meeting. First item on the agenda, I believe, got scratched, right?
Yes, I need to read their email in because they're going to withdraw and I need a motion to withdraw. Approve, accept the withdrawal. So, we received an email from the engineer Scott Feria today at 3:04. Hi, Carrie, those are certainly interesting comments from the building inspector and seem to render our plan deniable, which we don't want. Can I please withdraw from tonight's meeting? And I'll discuss with our attorney as to how they would like to proceed.
Right, okay. This is after back and forth between the building commissioner and the applicant. Some concerns we had with the shape of their, planned shape of their lot. The concern is that it's a pork chop or a rat tail funnel shape. To try to get the right frontage and all this. So they went back and forth. And the conclusion the applicant drew was that they're going to, they wish to withdraw. So, and somebody make a motion, have to make a motion to accept their withdrawal or to withdraw their application.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
That motion made, seconded, in all favor?
Aye.
Aye. They withdrawing their application, is there anything further we got to do on that, Carrie?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, you're doing 50 things at once.
I know, I'm trying to-
I had to take care of that, probably want to mute her. She's got an open mic.
This is the next item. That's him anyways.
Oh, okay, alright, so he's ready to go. Alright, so second item on the agenda is the Butler Fairly Irrevocable Trust, 0 and 833 Williams Street. And chapter land release request for map eight lots 20 and 21. Alright, sir, are you prepared to speak to us? Do you want to-
Yes. Yeah, my name is Jacob Butler, I'm one of the trustees.
Okay. And could you just give us a general overview of what you're trying to do here?
Yes, well, there are two parcels of land that were owned by my mother and then got put into an irrevocable trust. And what we, we are interested in selling the property. We actually already have a purchase and sale agreement. But, and we have a closing date. We didn't realize that this needed to go before the town for permission to sell.
Okay. Alright, so gentlemen of the board, looks like what the applicant is doing here is trying to release-
Just ask them a quick question.
Yeah, sure. I just had a quick question, sir. And this in no way affects the decision of yes or no on this. But in the letter, it says that the parcel is to be sold and notices to be given with disclosures to its intended use to the permitting and construction of industrial use. So is the new owner planning to put a business there? Is that the intention?
Not as far as I know. They, he, I said, I'm going to use the word "they" because it's a family and the boy's mother who's going to occupy the end of the apartment.
Oh, okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, so this is before us because the town gets first round of refusal. This goes to the board of selectmen after, is it after us, Carrie? Is it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we have to deliberate on whether or not we have any, we have an interest in this? And if we don't, we can vote as such. And then it goes to the board of selectmen next and they will generally just take our recommendation. Do you have any questions or objections you want to discuss between us or with the applicant before we take a two up?
Nothing here. There's really nothing, so.
Okay, yeah, nothing. Alright, so I think the motion is to decline.
Recommend waiving right of first refusal.
Alright, thank you, yeah, it's a double item. So we make a motion to recommend denying the first round of refusal for Butler Family Irrevocable Trust, 01833 Williams Street, map eight lots 20 and 21.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, seconded, in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, alright, that's five ayes. Motion carries. You're all set with us, sir?
Okay, I just want to say a special thank you for squeezing me in. I know it was last minute and I really do appreciate it.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, thank you, you too.
Moving right along. Next item on the agenda is a presentation by Serpent on the conservation bylaw amendment and recommendations.
Hello. Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much. I know it's been some time since I've last been here. So just as a reminder, Michelle Tinger, I'm the assistant director of environmental planning over at Serpent. So I'm just going to get up on the screen the presentation that we have before you tonight. Just so you know, I am joined here by Karen Pettenelli, who's the principal natural resources planner over at Serpent. The last meeting that we had, I know we went over a lot of material. I want to make sure that we're being mindful of your time. We're going to skip over a few things that you've already heard of. You've already gone over some of the work that Serpent has previously done, just in regards to its regional review process. We want to be able to really focus in on the red line bylaw that we have before you tonight. So I'll kind of hop over to a great spot for us to start, which is just a little bit of the feedback that we've heard to date, which allowed us to get to where we are today. The goal of this meeting for us is just to hear from you, hear all the feedback that you have. Let us know, are we headed in the right direction? Did we get the information correct? Is there anything else that we should be considering? What recommendations do you have and what feedback do you have? So that we can further improve this bylaw for you. So I will start with some of the town goals for this bylaw, which included improving the planning board's oversight on this, encouraging low-impact development, and ensuring thoughtful, context-sensitive, open space preservation. Some of the general observations that we were informed of from the town include that the bylaw is frequently used by developers. Most open space is owned by HOAs. Developers often default to preserving wetlands as open space. Lot sizes typically run between, like somewhere around 10,000, 12,000 square feet. No conservation subdivisions have been approved, from what we've been told, since 2015. There was mention of Forest Hills, which was an appeal, so we wanted to make sure that we include that as part of the information. And then developers tend to prefer 40B projects due to the greater flexibility it provides. Planning and procedural considerations that we were told about from the town, just from previous conversations and meetings. A unified development review process would be something that would be beneficial overall. Encouraging pre-consultation meetings, just when it comes to reviewing this application process and ensuring that the process is entirely streamlined. Requiring submission of both conservation and conventional subdivision plans, so that folks can understand the differences between them. Considering developing a narrative requirement and checklist for applicants so that they can further understand what it is that they need to provide you, so that you can make the best decision possible for the town. And then design flexibility. Some open space issues and recommendations that came from the town also include, I know last time we had talked about the open space requirement. Currently you have 20%. There have been back and forth conversations on, is 20% too low? Is it too high? Ultimately, that's what we're going before all of these different boards and committee members to understand what it is you would like to see within this bylaw. Just as a note, as we kind of go into that draft text, we did not change it in this draft bylaw because we want to be able to have further conversations with you all. Maximum 25% wetland allowance, emphasizing the usability and accessibility of open space. Recreational amenities should be encouraged. Adding language to specify types of recreational uses allowed or favored. Requiring maintenance plans and enforcement mechanisms. Clarifying and defining contiguity. And considering requiring conservation restrictions for any land that is not conveyed to the town. So this kind of takes us to where we were prior to providing you with the red line version. So what we've done is reviewed several different plans, other reports. Things that were really related to Dyson specifically. We delved into this. I do want to note that we were informed of your stormwater bylaw being updated in this process. So for this text, we simply just referred to that because we do not have any kind of updated text. We understand that you're going through a town process at this moment. But we've reviewed the master plan, Dyson's open space and recreation plan, the low-impact development report that was done by Mass Audubon specifically for Dyson, the subdivision rules and regulations, and then also Mass Audubon's bylaw review for low-impact development, climate smart, and natural, nature-based solutions. So this is why I want to make sure I'm being mindful of your time. This is kind of background information, just to let you know kind of where, with the conversations that we've had to date, what we did, where we are today, and also we're going to be meeting with the Parks and Rec Committee, Open Space Committee, the Zoning Board of Appeals, meeting before the planning board tonight, and several other boards and commissions. So we really want to make sure that we're listening to you, what is it that you want? This is just a baseline. So we want to be able to provide you with something to scratch up, write notes. Is some of this information valid? Is there anything that needs to be changed? I want to be able to have open dialogue with you all and really be able to listen. So that's kind of where I'll pause on the presentation there, since it's already been so much information. Again, making sure that we're using your time as best as possible and not adding anything additional that really isn't necessary. So I will open it up to the board.
Okay, so what we were provided here, this is the red line version, right? So this is what you were referring to here?
Yes.
I just, we're not trying to get this in the annual town meeting, right? We're too late for that. This is something that we wouldn't be addressing for another year. Right? Because we wouldn't be doing anything with the bylaw change until next June, right? 2026?
From my understanding, there typically needs to be some kind of planning process to take you before town meeting, so.
Well, I guess what we, what we're not trying to do is get this at the special. We're not trying to do a bylaw change at the special.
We typically don't like to do bylaw change at the special.
Okay.
That's usually just-
We unofficially have a second town meeting, a special town meeting in November. That's what I'm referring to. So things that we don't get into the agenda for this annual town meeting, which at this point, considering it's in three weeks.
Yeah, the warrant's closed.
Yeah, that's a little-
Yeah, it's just not happening. So the other opportunity would be the special, but as Carrie said, we typically don't like to do this kind of thing at a special. But, okay, I'm just trying to understand timeline here. So this might be next June before we, which means if, you know, if you back that up, it's really March is when you want to lock it down, 2026. So that's kind of, that's your working deadline to have all the red lines from everybody and get a document where, that we'd have a public hearing. And then once that was closed, we'd settle on a final version that would then go to town meeting for approval. So all that being said, sorry for the huge preamble. I know we talked about, we went back and forth there for a while about the minimum open space requirement. Unfortunately, I don't have my guns from all that back and forth, but I thought we wanted to bump that number way up.
Well, we had discussed two things. One was increasing the number.
Yes.
And then the other alternative was leaving it as is, but reducing the amount of wetlands to 0% as a contribution.
Yes, correct.
So, and I think we kind of settled on leaving it 20% as the open space, but 0% of wetlands can be contributed as an open space, as part of that open space.
Yeah.
So it kind of bumps up the number. In many cases, it bumps up the number drastically because open space is such a big, I mean, wetlands is such a big part of what people are setting aside, but.
And the last time that we came before you, so we took all of that information that you provided for that and we did remove that wetlands consideration and then also left the 20% as is.
Now, where is that right now?
So let me-
I'm going to make sure we captured that because anyone will have been back and forth. I would want them to be in there. Open space restrictions, all still incorrect.
So it is on page six.
Yeah, the open space requirement is there.
So, yeah, kind of embedded in a revised version of the calculation. This is a different question. I don't think, I'm not sure if we got presented that before. Our current version of the calculation is just, it's a conventional yield plan and the same number of lots. And this is a different way of calculating, which I don't know if it comes out to the same number or not. But what I can see in here, I think it mentions that within lakes, ponds, rental pools, protected, whatever, wetlands. Subtract the following. So basically it's add it all up, subtract wetlands, comes to a number, plug it into a formula. I'm not sure I understand the formula exactly how it works and why it's different than our current one.
So part of the update for that is to just make sure that it's as clear as possible. But if you're saying that it's not very easily understood, that's something we'll take into consideration to perhaps simplify it a little bit more. The point is not to make more hurdles.
It's equivalent, the number of lots is equivalent to that you would have under conventional, that's the current. That's pretty kind of straightforward. But I do like, it should, what is the open space should not include lakes, ponds, rental pools, you know, protected areas, wetlands, et cetera, easements. You know, this is basically, if it's not buildable, it's not part of wetland. I mean, it's not part of the open space is kind of what you're saying here, so.
Well, it just means it can't be used.
It can't be used, yeah.
Any recreation.
Right.
And any, yeah, any active or passive recreation use, because you can't do that on a rural pool or a wetland.
Yeah.
So we're also recounting, we're also putting in 100-year floodplains. So that's, those are, that's a new one on here. So on 4381, on the same page, page six. So items that have to be subtracted from the, to determine the net acreage, subtract the following from the total. See, these are things you can't count towards that 20%. Why is the 100-year floodplain in there? Is that land you can't have any active or passive recreation of? It's really just a question, I don't know. Ever seen that before? Okay, I understand wetlands, I understand lakes, ponds, rental pools. Easements or restrictions of prohibited development. But I don't know why the 100-year floodplain is in there. Is that something you've seen before?
So this likely came from the low-impact development review that was, or the report that was done by Mass Audubon. So I can go back and I'll just make a mark here to be able to further address that.
That wouldn't make sense to have in there, so that it's separate? Because to eliminate potential, I know it's 100-year floodplain, the odds are.
Right.
It's probably not going to happen, but what did we have, like three or four 100-year storms last year? So maybe 4% for the next five, three years.
Maybe, probably, you know, 400 years, we're probably good. But, you know, I would think you'd want to keep that out.
Keep that on? Well, I'm not saying take it out, I just wasn't really sure. I've never had, noticed that before. I'm just curious on the, why that's there, if it's in the, okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't have any, any other real pointed questions. I really was zeroing in on the 20%. Why are we stuck to that? Makes sense that all the back and forth, we made sure we wanted to take off all these other things that were pumping up the numbers. I'm just starting with the plating of the number, when there really wasn't all that much open space.
I did have one question, which is on 4320. Where you say this provision may support MBTA community compliance, subject to further zoning infrastructure. I don't doubt the validity of that statement, but as a bylaw, it doesn't constrain us, it doesn't constrain the applicant. It's informational, it's true most of the time. I don't know, like, it's not the kind of thing I would want in a bylaw.
So which paragraph, I'm sorry?
Where it says, "This provision may provide or may support MBTA community compliance."
That was on the-
The end of the third paragraph.
Third paragraph on page two.
Yeah. I mean, it may be a true statement, it's just, it's not a enforceable bylaw.
Yeah, some-
So I would just-
My underst-
Put it in there.
Yeah, my understanding going back is that Dyson is not an MBTA community.
We are.
What's, you are?
Yes.
Ralph will tell you, no.
So that's, yeah.
What, I missed what you said.
I said Ralph will tell you we're not.
We are, we are an MBT community by definition.
Yeah, I thought-
I don't know what's going on.
Okay, I can go back to staff and-
Because we are, we, we are butt-taun.
Got it.
There's no getting around it.
But whatever, it's just, it's not an enforceable statement, so.
Yes, correct.
Why would you put that in a bylaw?
Are we taking an official stance as a town of Dyson, say we're not an MBT, MBTA community? Because that is news.
No, I think it's just that-
That's the first I've heard.
It's just an understanding of are or are we not. It's never been stated by the state. The state hasn't told us, I don't think. Maybe it has.
The state has.
The state has, okay, whatever.
The state has. We have a table and we're on that table.
Okay. That's, those are the only questions I had about this.
Okay.
Thank you.
You loving? You loving?
Yeah.
Okay, so would you like us to, you said you'd like us to go through this in a little more detail and get comments back to you?
Yeah, that would be lovely. I know you can't possibly go through everything in a, in a meeting, so I want to be able to provide you with the time needed to be able to review it. Carrie, feel free to forward me any information and then we'll kind of-
Would you like a Word copy? You know, I'm a big fan of editing PDFs. But a Word copy would be outstanding.
Yeah, I can convert it into a Word document.
Oh, you don't have it?
Well, I think-
I think, I think we did send it. Yeah, it should be in a Word.
Oh, okay, I already have it.
Okay.
So yes.
Because I'm sure the Word copy still has all the track changes in it.
Yep.
I'd rather have that one than try to-
Yeah, redo it.
Put a bunch of comments on a 175-page PDF.
I just wanted to add, one item was, I noticed that in the language of this, you note the SPGA, Special Permit Granting Authority, but it doesn't strictly call, it doesn't specifically call out the planning board.
Okay, we'll go back and make that change.
Because otherwise it would go to the zoning board, but it's always-
Always the planning board, yep. So then I just wanted to let you know of any next steps. So we do have a regional workshop, just so you're aware, on June 11th from 12 to 2. All are welcome. We're going to be discussing some of that regional review work that we did, though you've already heard it probably way too many times. We're also going to be discussing a little bit about the work that we're doing with Middleborough as well. So we're doing a OSRD bylaw update review process with them as well. So it's a good way to connect with other communities, just ask about their bylaws, any challenges, anything that is working well for them as well. And then for, so I want to kind of backtrack. I know, I know it was mentioned that perhaps next June, this would go through a permanent or a town meeting process. I believe our contract does end June 30th. So we would be providing as many updated versions of this as possible to get you to a really good spot to then do that process for the town to go through a town meeting process.
It expires this June?
It expires this June, unfortunately.
Alright.
Correct.
Alright, so, okay.
So any, we're happy to come back before the planning board, want to make sure that we're really, I know it's a small window of time, but want to make sure that we're really listening to you, generating all the feedback as possible. Again, we're kind of doing a, we're doing a little bit of a tour right now with all of the different boards, committees, and commissions. But again, the point of it is to make sure that we're listening to you and making sure that we're able to lay that into paper and providing the information that you would like to see along with reviewing all of your, like, the master plan, OSRP, all of these reports and information from community-based processes that were previously done.
What's your goal for deliverable by 30 June?
Um, so, like, in terms of having a final product or where we would like to be?
Well, I don't, it sounded to me like your work is completed or uncompleted will end 30 June.
Correct. However, I think our goal is to always make sure that we're providing you with something you're satisfied with. So that's, that's going to be my, my goal ultimately, is coming back before you. And that's, that's why if you feel that another meeting is necessary after we kind of do this tour, before or before we, or after we finalize this tour and before that June 30th date, we want to make sure that we're making those updates and then saying, you know, this is, these are all the amendments that we've made so far based on all of that conversation and feedback. Is, is this good for you? Is this something that you're satisfied with? Also knowing that before you even get through to town meeting process, you can make those updates as well. The town very well can do that. But we're here to help assist you as best as possible. This is from a grant, I believe that was at no cost to the town, from my understanding. So we're just here to make sure we're doing a good job for you.
Okay. We're meeting June 4th, so there's enough time between now and then to have the rest of your tour encircled by some of us. And what probably should happen is, whatever your plan is over the next, I want to say month, because that's pretty much what you have left.
Yeah.
We can get, we can give you our inputs. And whatever you get from the other groups you're meeting, I presume it's happening over the next month?
Yeah, within, actually, most of them are happening within these next two weeks.
Okay.
So-
You're going to incorporate whatever you get from all of those people, whether or not we meet. If you could electronically send a copy to Carrie, communicate via email.
Absolutely.
Meeting yet.
Yeah, we can do that.
June 4th is right around the corner here, so I don't think we'd have time to, you know, get our inputs, get everybody's inputs, roll it all in and meet us again on the 4th. Unless you think you can magic that, but.
I can't provide that magic, but we will do our best.
Okay. Alright, play it by ear. Alright.
Perfect. Thank you, appreciate it. Perfect, thank you, appreciate all your time.
Anyone else on the board? Alright, thank you, appreciate it, thank you for having me.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Alright, next on the agenda is, uh, a general public hearing for TNA trust through William Street, map twenty-one dot twenty, special permit and definitive subdivision application. Is the applicant online?
He's, he's trying to log in now, I'm conversing with him.
Yeah, cause you're, uh, I tried to join when she was presenting and I couldn't.
You couldn't?
Said the meeting was scheduled for June fourth. I don't know what that means.
Oy.
Zoom strikes again.
Yeah.
You were able to join Zoom though, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Did you just use the passcode and the meeting ID that's on the agenda?
Yeah.
I tried, I was trying to join while you were on, so I can see, to blow up what you were showing there. Sat there and spun for a while.
Alright.
Alright, we'll take a pause while the applicant tries to join. Somebody make a motion to, uh.
The four.
Do we have to continue the public hearing?
Well, I would give him a couple more minutes, see if he can get on, cause I just sent him the link.
Okay.
Directly, so I'm hoping.
Or for him to jump on then.
Yeah. If you want to do one of these reports while we're waiting, we can.
Yeah, so I tried, just tried joining again, it said the meeting is scheduled for, for June fourth.
Let me.
Can you see me trying to join?
Nope.
Yeah, I don't see myself there. Alright, so we can, we can skip forward, I'll just close this, I don't know what I'm doing wrong. Um, alright, so we can, uh, we can skip down to, uh, the reports. Uh, first one is the Stormwater Representative, uh, Stormwater Committee Report. Mr. Figurio, if you'd like to report anything to the group from, I think you had a meeting this afternoon in the water, right?
I really don't have much to say about it, it was a very short meeting, probably the one of the, the record.
Twenty minutes. Twenty minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
New world record.
That's cause you weren't there.
I know. The only thing that I found on there is that I thought we had drawn into the, uh, idea of Stormwater and many other boards, the, and the advisory board to the planning board. And it seems like you didn't, that, that doesn't work for you, or, you know, for my understanding, so please.
I think that, I think the confusion is, we've been asked to comment on some plans, on some reports from Western and Sampson. But initially, um, it came from the Board of Health, but I got back to Carrie. Uh, we are a subcommittee of Board of Health, so actually, we, we should report to them, and they should report to you. We all know that's not gonna work. Uh, there's nobody on the Board of Health that understands at once, I need to do a stormwater. So, what I said to Carrie was, um, relative to the plans that I got, I think this is the Almeda project. We are gonna comment on these because Western and Sampson will comment, and if we read their comments, it's gonna eliminate duplication of asking questions. And then if we just have any questions about Western and Sampson generates, we can ask them and get them resolved.
Right, so, Western and, so, so what, the process we follow with Western and Sampson is, we, we, we get the application, we get the, the plans, and, you know, we can accept those initially. But really what we wanna do is, because we're already paying Western and Sampson to do the peer review, they go through it and they provide a list of comments and questions to the applicant. And then we go through those.
Right.
And that's what you were provided.
That, and that, so, alright, so what I'm saying is, when plans come in, Stormwater will not review plans for a development, a housing development.
Right.
We'll wait for Western and Sampson.
Right.
See what they write, and see if we have questions, and then we can give you feedback. But the feedback is gonna be Stormwater to planning, we're not going to the Board of Health, that's a waste of time.
second look from Stormwater Committee, because there are things that they left as big question marks. So I went, I went through, so my, this is my list of comments, right? These comments are not on the application, these comments are on things that Western and Sampson said, where I said, okay, you know, it'd be great if, request either CONCON or Stormwater Committee to review the comments made by Western and Sampson for section forty-three ten. So I went along and I, I kinda did, I did some of that.
Yeah.
Uh, but if you look through Western and Sampson's report, that's really all we're asking.
Yeah.
They say, wait for Western and Sampson to do, Western and Sampson to do what they do, and then look at that, not look at the big, the raw package.
I think the confusion came in because it was from the Board of Health, I got a set of plans.
Yeah.
I had read the plans written, I had talked to Carrie, I said, hey, your board has looked at it, and she said, no. I said, we're not doing anything. Then I got the plans mailed to me, and it was like, that's not what we're gonna do, we're gonna, we've been, we share engineers. So obviously, we're gonna look to see what Western and Sampson is saying, and if we have questions, we'll get back to the planning board. Now, CONCON also kind of follows the same thing, cause sometimes their questions and Stormwater questions come together, and it's, we both get the same answer.
Right, it's, it's a, it's a combined report from Western and Sampson. So.
And, and the other thing is, I don't wanna repeat what happened when the first building was built on Richmond Hill. Because there was misinformation, the proponents were very angry when they were told, you need to have a stormwater permit. And thank goodness, we had Western and Sampson on board, because we absolutely do. They were angry because somebody told them, some unidentified person, gave them the wrong information. So, once Western and Sampson said, you have to do it, they weren't happy, but it was done. I don't wanna repeat of that. I think, I think, let's say the boys can work together, find some of this other misinformation that individuals give out, is what creates problems. My main concern of talking to Carrie and being here tonight is just to understand, what, I'm saying we're gonna do is exactly what you're saying. We're on the same page, we're not dealing with the Board of Health, anything that comes up, we will send out to you.
But the, the prob, the problem is the Stormwater Committee is, was.
Yeah, it's a subcommittee of the Board of Health.
It's a subcommittee of, of the Board of Health, and they're the ones that are supposed to be overseeing Stormwater Committee.
But that ended when we lost our engineer, sort of, because he was the only part of, part of us, and he wasn't a board member. And after he left, obviously, that's when we started looking for an engineering firm, which we now have. But, it was also after he left, that, that board said, they wanted nothing to do with us, they were not gonna deal with us or anything else.
So at, at this point, do you have the Western and Sampson reports?
I have the report on, um, the Elm Street building. I got that one today.
You should also.
So many emails today.
Yeah, you should also have the one from the Almeda project.
This was twenty-two thirty-one Elm.
And Bell, and Bell Farms. You have three different Western and Sampson reports.
It should be Bell Farm Estates, which is the subdivision up on Milk Street.
What's Almeda?
Uh, Almeda is the one next to Hunter's Hill.
Yes, William.
Okay, did, uh, when did Bell Farms come in?
That just came in, I wanna say, within the week.
Yeah.
Within the week.
Um, did you send it to me, or did?
I sent it to Elizabeth with instructions to forward it to the Stormwater Committee. Isn't that the one I responded on with the timeline? That's the Almeda one.
That's the Almeda one.
Yeah.
Okay, the one I printed tonight is this twenty-two thirty-one Elm, so I will check to see, if I don't find it, I'll just email you and ask if you can send it again.
Yeah, cause you.
The other thing that, that I'm concerned about is, um, on that project on Elm Street, excuse me, Elm, the first time, the first building, after we got through the blow-up, there were waves that had to be granted. The Board of Health granted one, and left the others hanging, and so we took care of them at a stormwater meeting. So, that's something that, I'm, I'm reading, as I read this, I see some comments. So if I see Board of Health, I will do my best to figure this out, but it's probably gonna come through the Stormwater Committee, because we still have no communication. Now, the good news is, I think, um, for more than six months now, we have an engineer from Western and Sampson reviewing the Stormwater bylaw regulations, our whole stormwater program, cause we've gotta get into testing. And when that report comes out, it's something that we'll share with everybody, because if they're gonna recommend changes in bylaws and stuff, everybody's gotta know about it.
Right.
So that we don't clash, we're all in agreement that your bylaw relates to Stormwater, uh, the Clean Water Act, and we're Clean Water Act, all of this stuff comes together. Now.
Yeah, right now, there's a lot of contradictions.
The lady from Serpent asked me to review what they had put together, and I said to her, it would be premature, because I don't have the report from Western and Sampson. They were hired as part from the grant money.
Right.
To do this, so they're doing the whole program. So then she asked me to send their report to her, and I said, they aren't gonna release it. And she said, well, I'll talk to them, I said, no, 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 you can't contact Western and Sampson, because they're contracted to the town. So when that report comes out, again, I don't know if anything that Serpent has worked on. So, but you're gonna get that information, it could be another month or two, we get periodic, um, summaries of what they're doing, but, no, obviously, we've not written reports. So, um, Joe, did you wanna mention, um, what we talked about with Brook Street?
I, I was gonna mention.
Okay, so anyhow, um, we'll just, we'll just stay in touch to Carrie, so that reports that you get and you want us to look at, I'll make sure we get out. And anything I get back, I'll make sure it comes out.
Okay.
One of the reports I got, um, I said I can't release that now, because the planning board hasn't gotten its damn report, and it would be inappropriate for me to send it out to the Stormwater Committee, so I told them.
Uh, and what, what, what report?
Well, it's the last report that was released that I said, I think you said it's one, two, uh, planning, is that Almeda?
Yes.
And I said.
Yeah, that, that stuff's on public record, you can do whatever you want with it.
But, the point is, if the report is written at your request, for you.
I, I know, but we're, we, we are a public body, so.
Right, but you should get it first.
It doesn't matter.
Clearly, it does.
It, it really doesn't, I mean, we should get it first, we, it, it goes to Carrie. Carrie gets it, she's, as soon as Carrie gets it, the planning board got it, and so it can go anywhere.
Okay. Well, as I said, uh, when I set the meeting today, I have it, I will send it out, but since we didn't request the report, the appropriate thing is, the committee that requested it should get it first. So if giving it to Carrie, you consider getting it first, that's fine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, that's fine, um.
She, she's, she's our hub of communication.
Yeah, and that, and that's fine.
Right.
But when I look at this from a committee, committee standpoint.
Yeah.
If somebody took that report for coincidence answer that they're putting together, and they publicized it, and this, the committees that wanted it done are sitting around saying, where's that report? So, I didn't wanna get into that, so to avoid that, that's what we did, but now I know.
Yeah, it's just.
It's just a matter of finding out how these things should be communicated, uh, because we're in a awkward position, but we'll work around it.
We don't, I mean, the, the thing we don't do is we don't post the stuff online, make it readily available for the public. And I think the only reason we don't do that is cause they're like a hundred meg each.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they're long.
They're big, so, I, we don't really have a file share.
No.
We're really done, I mean, we have, we do have a place to have a file repository on, on the town website, but I, I'm willing to bet that there's a limit, how much stuff we can put there.
Probably.
We can test it.
I'd like to not test it.
And then it stops working, uh, but yeah, we don't really, I mean, but if people ask, they can have it, I mean, it just, I think right now, it's just a matter of people need to ask, and you're, you, you're set up a, an acrobat, you know, thing where you can just, they can just click on the link and download it, so you're not actually emailing a hundred meg file.
Under, yeah.
So just to clarify, this Western and Sampson thing for twenty-two thirty-one Elm, this can be sent out to the Stormwater Committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
The, the set of plans that, that came in, that you sent over to the, those that go out?
For Almeda?
Mm-hmm.
And the, um.
Bell Farm, or?
This is Almeda.
Almeda.
Right, so it's Bell Farms I gotta look for, I don't have it, I'll get, I'll send it out.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
My only concern about this, uh, whole thing is, I was under the impression, I still am, that when we set this whole thing up through the planning board, is to make sure that we make it easier for permitting process, that we don't delay, the last time that the, uh, whatever it was that put up that big building, we approved it here, then it went to you.
No.
Oh, yes.
No, what happened was, you issued the permit to do it. They came in to talk about stormwater, and were told, you're gonna have a stormwater permit. We hadn't gotten anything on it, the stormwater permit would have, what, in effect, got us involved. And then when they found out they had to get a stormwater permit, that's when there were fireworks here. Mister Eman, he had his engineer there yelling and hollering and screaming, and, um, I said, we'll have, you'll have to come back, cause you've gotta bring the application and the check. So the next time they came, and I told them, hey, the time, there'll be no more of that, you're not gonna carry on that way at a public meeting. When they came in the next time, it was only the engineer, he put the stuff on the table, we got through it, that's the day we went through the waivers that hadn't been approved, so we get all the waivers out of the way. And then, so then the, um, the application were taken to the Board of Health, because they, it's their permit, we just received it. Then it disappeared, and months went by, and one of their people called and said, by the way, you never sent us our permit. So we checked, gone, out of space, just like some of the records disappeared. So then we had to have them issue another check, so there were some strange things going on, and I wanna avoid that.
Having been someone that's been on the other side of things, that's the thing that is, is absolutely horrible to see happen anywhere.
It didn't happen because of the Stormwater Committee, I can assure you that.
Okay.
Okay.
It didn't happen be, you know, because of the planning board.
No, it didn't.
It hasn't happened on any other project. It was sitting literally on the table where you are right now, it went downstairs, and months later, they called up and said, oh, they sent an email, where's our stormwater permit? So we checked, we never got it, I mean, from here to downstairs, you know, but anyhow.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, well, just.
I, I, I was just concerned that I thought Stormwater was the creator of the issue.
They tried to make it look that way.
Huh?
They tried to make it look that way.
Okay.
If Western and Sampson were not involved, the battle would still be going on about whether or not they needed a stormwater permit. But when they issued their first report, it clearly stated, cause they kept saying, it's less than thirty-five thousand square feet, you can drive by and see it's more than that. And, uh, Western and Sampson said, it's over an acre. And then they went on as a stormwater component, and so forth and so on. But again, it was all because somebody, certainly not anyone on the Stormwater Committee that I'm aware of, said, you don't need a stormwater permit.
No, 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 no. That's, this is the plan where Weston and Sampson submitted their comments. They revised this. And then remember, there's an email asking, should this go back to Almeida?
I, I didn't think it needed to, because everything they said. And that's, and that's why I replied back to Weston and Sampson today, and said, I don't think we need another, a second.
Actually, it'd be a third review.
I don't think we need a third review. We already have two.
Yeah.
We had the initial, and then we had an update, and then this is, that revised plan you see there for Almeida, is actually the applicant's response to the second review.
Okay.
With the changes to their plans.
Okay.
So what I did was I went through Weston and Sampson's second review, and the applicant's response today, and bounced it off of all my comments, and said, okay, yeah, nothing has really changed. We still would really like stormwater to comment on these. So all the things that were concerns, I, I don't wanna say concerns, all the things that we want, we were trying to, we, we wanted a second town look at, nothing's changed. All they did was they went through and they made sure the hydrants were, had all the same symbols, and made sure that they showed the water tie-ins on every property, even though they're not gonna tie in, because it's a moratorium. Uh, they went through, and they, they got the right lighting, put the details on the lighting. You'll, you'll, if you look, if you look at Weston and Sampson's second review, and then you look at the other document that came with that, which is the applicant's response with his updated plans, and he also has the, uh, the operation and maintenance plan, which is a stormwater committee document. It's all about what they've gotta do. So I guess, I guess the question is, if you think, what, if you want Weston and Sampson to go through it again, then we need to figure that out. And then they had to put out, then they had to put out a, um, a, a ROM or a, what do they call it?
Scope and services.
Scope and services, and the applicant has to pay another fee.
No, um, quite frankly, the only project we've ever done on it was on Brook Street, and we know that's unique.
Yep.
But, what I had said to Kerry was, the plans came in.
Yep.
I don't need to see the plans. The fastest way to get this done is to look at the report from Weston and Sampson.
That's exactly.
And respond to that.
That's exactly what I do.
Exactly.
It's so much faster.
Uh, I mean.
Yeah.
Um.
So, I mean, when a new subdivision proposal comes to us, it's plans only. That's all we get. And then it goes to Weston and Sampson.
It builds from there.
They're getting a copy of the plans only, which is of no real value, other than FYI, something's coming up.
Yeah.
They really just say like, okay, well, that's nice, but I'm not gonna do anything.
And that's, and that's why we.
Wait till the report, and then I, that's my start point, is the report, so that's, I think, what everybody's saying.
And if you look at the updated flow chart that we put together, uh, not to circle back to that, but I mean, right away, it says, we don't meet. We don't, we don't even meet with the applicant. The applicant meets with Kerry to submit the application and everything, and to, to pay for the, the engineering, uh, services, but we don't actually meet with the applicant until after Weston and Sampson provides the report and the applicant response. So there's actually, there's a lot of lead-in prior to us meeting with them, so that we can prevent multiple meetings, and also, uh, to be armed with as much information as possible, so we have a back and forth. And if, if we're good with the one back and forth, the applicant, applicant comes in and meets. So we already have, we're trying to, we're trying to front load as much as we can, so we're not spending more time doing it.
And stormwater, um, solar farms, stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
All of them. What happens is, uh, the plans come in and they go through your process, and you permit these things, and we go to health, issue the stormwater permit. It doesn't end there, because, because we don't have anyone to do the inspections. There are times when we've had to have site visits by Weston and Sampson, and there were times when the money was running out.
Mm-hmm.
So they had to do an amended or an additional proposal, because, uh, I know Mike had an emergency, we had a big brainstorm, and he had to get somebody down here immediately. Like, again, if we had somebody on, in our employee, they'd have done it.
Mm-hmm.
But because of this, I'll call it, emergency engineering thing, there was no proposal prepared. It's get down here now. Then after the fact, they wrote the proposal about the money to pay for that inspection, and also wrote all the things that had to be done, because the, a burn blew out in the water, polluted this thing with the sand and the dirt and, and, so that part of it is a little different with stormwater, because we do end up meeting with them, um, because of onsite things, where we don't. Onsite visits are made, but in all honesty, it's not the same as it is when you have a P E do it.
Right.
So, uh, but the main thing right now is, we have, I believe, three projects. We did the Elm Street building, we got Bell, and we got Almeida.
Right.
What's the priority listing for us to get back to you of those three?
Almeida.
Almeida?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Almeida, then, then Bell, right?
Then Bell, and then, um, Eman.
Eman, yeah.
Oh, so it's, it's, all right, 'cause I get even in front of you, and I'm reading it, and I'm just making notes, but, you know, what's not applicable, what, whatever. Um, so, I'll check the Almeida when I get home.
Okay.
And, um, but as fast as we can. I know Tommy said that he looked at plans, so, uh, Tommy's the easiest one to get feedback from.
Okay. Yeah, I've got a couple, uh, questions for him, as a tree warden and a highway super, because we had questions that specifically things were called out on the Almeida thing. Um, that I think it'd be appropriate if he could take a look at.
Do, just a question. I know we've spoken about, you know, and in times that Jim's been here, we, I know the town was trying to move to some sort of, or he was trying to move to like an online permitting.
That's, that's already here.
So if it's already here, applicant applies for a building permit.
That's after us, though. That's down the road.
So what initiates their process to, like, th- there's nothing that we could initiate, or the, the applicant could initiate that?
To give them a heads up?
Well, you know, I'm, step one, planning board. Jeff gets notified. He has to act. He signs off, then that notifies, let's say, Nancy, gives her a chance to review. She signs off, then to this one, you know what I mean?
Well, it's, it's, it's in parallel. Right now, the way it works now, it used to be, it used to be very serial. Now it's all parallel. It's,
Yeah.
It's not really necessarily goes to planning board, it goes to planning and zoning office, which is Kerry. The development office. It's, no, that's the start, pretty much, and she gets the application, and that application triggers planning board, Concom, planning board or zoning board of appeal, zoning board, depending. So planning board slash zoning board, Concom, and stormwater, all at the same time.
Yeah.
And Board of Health, all at the same time.
So, the, the other trigger is too, when we receive an application, the applicant is required to deliver the same application and plans to various departments, including the building department, the water department, the Board of Health, um, highway, fire, the engineer, and I'm sure I'm missing someone in there.
It's a big, it's a big list.
And, and so, what we're saying is, the breakdown is, when the applicant submits the application to the Board of Health, the Board of Health is supposed to then give it to the stormwater committee. And that seems, that appears to be the communication, or was the communication breakdown, so I've had, I have met with Elizabeth, um, to explain that process to her. And then actually, what I have been doing as of late was, when I receive like a report or something, I'll follow it up with a single email to Elizabeth saying, please be sure that the stormwater committee sees this, because we have so-and-so scheduled for such-and-such a date. Kinda just like a reemphasizing that in there. Um, yeah, so that's what I've been doing for the moment. But as far as the permitting link, that's after they get this approval.
It's after we get through all of, yeah.
Yeah.
When somebody submits an application to you, for whatever it is.
Mm-hmm.
How does the Board of Assessors get notified?
They're required to be notified as well.
Because usually it's chaplain.
Yeah.
And the process for doing that, as we just found out, that the town has online, has not been followed. So the situation we have, uh, somebody came in to buy property, uh, that has a big section of chaplain, a house, but it's got a lot of chaplain. And as the town, you know, the real estate agent wants the commission and the sale, and the people want the property, dah 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 dah, and it's like, hold everything.
Mm-hmm.
You gotta go through the process, first write a request. It's all spelled out.
Yeah.
Online. And so, when it first came to Board of Assessors, three weeks ago, I looked at it and said, wait a minute, there's a whole bunch of steps left out. I said, I've noticed the procedure. I emailed it to them, so at the meeting we had, uh, this week, it was, here's the procedure. It's gotta be followed.
Mm-hmm.
The fact that somebody's rushing to buy this property, or somebody wants to do something else, it's chaplain, and if you look at all the boards listed, everyone's gotta agree.
Mm-hmm.
And, stupid, everyone has to make a recommendation to the Board of Selecting.
Mm-hmm.
You can't just say, hey, we're not interested.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we acted on that tonight.
Yeah.
So, any, yes, because it got added.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, um, it, it was, when it came to the assessors meeting, who's that was like a misanlock instantly. You can't do it that way. You, you got, you got boards others, you know, that's why there, there was the crush to get it to planning.
Yeah.
But again, it was because there was a coordination problem, and, I mean, there are instructions online to real estate agents on how to do this.
Yeah.
But they'll read it from now on.
Yeah.
But anyhow.
So, and as part as the, the application process that we receive, the Board of Assessors receives a copy as well of a full application.
Oh.
So.
I'm showing him the MBTA communities, uh, map.
Oh.
There isn't one that isn't.
So.
Sorry, change, changing subject.
I thought they would have to have a rail.
No, so the law is eighty-four communities that host MBTA services, including rapid transit, commuter rail, ferry, a bus. Okay, fine. Titan gets a pass there. They don't get a pass on the second bullet. Ninety-three bullets that are but, that is share a border with a city or a town that is served by the MBTA. That's us. So, we are an MBTA community.
Whether we like it or not.
Yep.
Yeah, they're just looking at that map, right?
It's interesting how they define these communities to that purpose, because when the big push was on to build the casino in, uh, East Park, Titan was left out of that as a committee potentially being affected with traffic and stuff. We hope it was picked up. We couldn't figure this out. We, we a lot of time.
Actually, Dy- Titan is, Titan is not included.
Yeah.
So.
Told ya.
What was that?
Titan is not included in the map.
Titan is not included.
It's carved out.
It's carved out.
Yeah.
Out of the map, but not on the list. Is that right?
It's, it's not on the list.
No, it's not, it's not on the, it's not on the, yeah.
Okay, sorry, anyway, get off topic. That's, okay.
It's, it, it could be late breaking news, who knows?
I went to a Serpent meeting, and we were.
Yeah, I know.
Um, but okay, I'm looking at it right now. We're not. It's, that's Titan right there. It's not blue. I'm not sure how we're gonna pass.
I know nothing about it.
We are MBTA or not?
We are not.
Oh.
According, according to the.
The map?
According to the map.
Good.
I'd like to see a list, names, because, you know, that's a map.
Those are all the communities that are being forced to build housing, correct?
Correct.
Hmm.
Yep, that goes right back to the other ones.
If we go to the casino list, that would be good, because that means funds would come out of there.
Okay, well, I'm gonna look into this, because that's, that's, I'm most completely convinced.
That's a topic for another day.
All right.
I know that, yeah.
Okay, I think we, I think we got, I got what I need.
All right, let's keep open, open lines of communication. All right, so next item on the agenda is, did Almeida ever join us?
Uh, no, no, actually, um, did you wanna go back to that? So unfortunately, he was not able to, because he jumped in his car and he didn't wanna do it from the car, so he just asked to continue it to the next meeting.
All right, so maybe, uh, make a motion to continue. The public carrier for a TNA Realty Trust, sir, William Street, map two oh one dot twenty.
I'll make that motion.
May it save it, all paper?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chin, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
Joe, you gonna say anything about Brook Street? You were starting to say it, then we got into this.
Yeah, that is correct. And that is that the National Grid requested that they upgraded some, um, additional items on the, um.
Electrical.
Electrical, there, ob-, you know, obviously, that's what it's all about.
Yeah, they've, they've been doing that for a while now.
No, this is brand new.
Hmm.
Everything that, everything, the basin works, we're ready to go, they got it, we got them on the tax roll for January the first.
Okay.
At the last April stormwater committee meeting, I just have my best footnotes in case something comes up. They were not officially on the agenda, but unanticipated items, Jim and Diaz said, he says, I got, I got an item I wanna just mention. He said, uh, today I received two applications for electrical permits for Brook Street. He said, it appears that National Grid has told them that because those panels have been sitting there idle for so long, there are upgrades that have to be made. So when I asked about it, uh, the man I'm dealing with now is Jonathan Prasad, because Alvin is no longer employed by them.
Right, right.
Um, and he just says, oh, there's some requirements we gotta make. So, I mentioned it at the meeting today, Joe was there, and he was asking me about it. We don't know the details, but Joe said, have they gone to the planning board? I said, I don't know the details of what it is they're going to do. All I know is, they've gotta do some work, because they're not gonna be, National Grid is not gonna let them.
Time, yeah.
Go live, or whatever, whatever they're supposed to do.
Do you know the, do you know any of the details of what they, what they have to upgrade?
No, and when Jim, when Jim mentioned it, he said, I got the applications for electrical permits today, and he didn't give us details, so, uh, if you, I don't know, Jim might be able to tell you, but it was just that.
I don't know that they'd have to come back to the planning board, because that's.
Not for something like that.
Well, Joe asked about it, and I said, I don't know, because I don't know how extensive it is, whatever they're doing.
Okay.
But, uh, maybe if you check with Jim and just say, what's happening? But, um, I asked Jonathan Prasad, when you guys build a lot live? And he said, what do you consider live? Uh, you flip the switch and you're generating, and everything's happening.
Hey, you start making a profit, because that's the point of a business.
When I asked that question, that was before these permits were mentioned.
Okay.
And he thought they would be end of April, middle of May. Well, it doesn't happen, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, hopefully they get that resolved soon, and it's not a big change out. Hope it's not the batteries.
I just want you to know, the pilot agreement's coming up again. This will be the third time.
Okay.
That'll be the last time, if I have to table it this time.
The other thing was, uh, Maris Lane, I don't know if they have to come before us, I mean, I, again.
Or?
For that first house on the left, um, they.
Working with Lisa on that, because of the, the water and the, the blurred water to the swale, oh.
Is this fourteen Maris?
Mm-hmm.
Fourteen Maris, so they already came before the planning board already.
Correct. I don't know if they gotta submit an ASBIL, or anything like that.
I don't, I don't believe they do. I'll double check with Jim. I wasn't under the impression that they did, because they were just fixing some of the.
Right.
Raising the grade in the back.
Right.
So were the, uh, original owners were supposed to be fixing and doing all of that, and they didn't do it right, and we never requested an ASBIL.
Okay.
And therefore, that's why those people are in the dilemma that they're in.
Where they are now. So I'll talk to Jim about it.
I, I think, I think going forward, I think we should request ASBILs before any occupancy permits are submitted because of these problems that are up there. I don't know how you guys feel, or.
It makes sense. That's standard. I mean, when, in my world, before anything gets, uh, occupancy, there's an ASBIL requirement, so that makes sense, because you should know what's there and where it is.
I, I know it's an added expense for, for contractors, or whatever, but I think it makes all the sense, and unfortunately, because of one, everybody else pays. That's really what it comes down to.
And we, we approve proposed plans. Who's to say they built it that way?
Exactly.
The ASBIL gives, uh, an assurance to everybody who puts their eyes on it or signs off on it, that it was done The, the as-built gives a, an assurance to everybody who puts their eyes on it or signs off on it that it was done per our.
Who does, who performs the as-built?
Usually the engineer of the project, you know, they'll.
The applicant.
Right, the applicant's engineer, cause they'll monitor the project, you know, as it goes on and they take measurements on, okay, this is where the pipe is and so on and so forth. And then they just, at the end, they compile all those markups and there's your as-built. Water's here, electric is here, septic here, so on and so forth.
We don't get the as-bills anymore? We used to.
We, yeah, we get them. But I think that we're, we're, we're talking about the property that's being done, or the work that's being done at fourteen Maris. That wasn't like a new home.
Right, maybe.
Or a new build.
That's a, uh, an amendment of an existing structure, property, so on and so forth that we voted on. So like, in this case, we would not.
Yeah, we would not.
Probably get an as-built.
The whole idea was to make sure that that water was flowing away from their backyard. That was the, the whole idea.
Correct. Correct.
And when I saw the plans, it was very tiny amount of flow. And any error there will create them to have the same problem going forward. So that's why I would like to see some kind of an as-built plan.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Just an informational item. On the agenda today, uh, there was mention of the Bay, Bay Coast Bank project. Um, it was on there so that the stormwater committee would understand, number one. Uh, I was at the bank one day and saw that they were rebuilding and retaining wall and doing landscaping. I contacted Lisa and said, take a look at that, cause they're close to the river. And if we have severe rains, there could be runoff and all that. The next thing that happened was I drove by and I saw the, the straw wall, it was the silt slot thing, so I knew she had gone there. So CONCOM has taken the lead on this. It doesn't appear to be a stormwater problem. Um, the engineer, MBL engineering, uh, got in touch with me and Lisa. Uh, we did not order them to stop. He ordered them to stop. They are preparing a plan for the conservation commission because proximity to the river, the buffer zone, the flood plain, everything related to the Three Mile River, only cause it's close. Um, and I just wanted the stormwater committee to know that. Also, I did talk to somebody from the bank and said, the town is not stopping you, except that there are rules, whether there's stormwater or CONCOM. And it looks like CONCOM will be working with your engineer. We just want you to know what we're looking at. And for the general public that drives by and is wondering what's going on, cause people question a lot of stuff, this is how we handle things. The bank isn't getting special treatment by getting penalized. This is what we have to do in the town. So if you hear anything about it, it's CONCOM and it's not a major problem. But they are working with us.
Sounds good.
And we didn't shut them down. They chose to hold on.
All right, fair. Thank you. Anything else?
Not at this moment.
Are you sure?
No.
All right, are we ready for the Serp Ed commissioner report?
Yes.
Thank heavens. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda, Serp Ed commissioner report. It's fast, I promise. Um, anything updated after Serp Ed, uh, after the work they're doing for us on the grant, uh, is a, uh, pitching a potential, uh, Route one thirty-eight corridor study. Um, at a, at a recent Serp Ed commissioners meeting, um, they presented a Route one forty corridor study and that was, you know, it's entered around, uh, City of Taunton and all the different areas they have throughout Route one forty. Um, I don't know if I emailed you the guys the copy of what they did for one forty. Was, was really impressive. And they went along, they looked at, uh, pedestrian areas, uh, looked at pedestrian safety, looked at recreation in some areas and all that. And right, right, right away in my mind, uh, I thought of, you know, Route one thirty-eight going the entire length or, uh, from the north end to the south end of Dyton. And, you know, the biggest uh, thing that sticks out to me is, you know, if you ask anybody who lives here, they know where town center is. Really isn't one, right?
North Dyton.
What's that?
North Dyton Village. That's the center of the universe.
Oh.
Only if you live in.
Only if you lived there, though. So for the rest of us, like, what am I missing? No, wait a minute. It's a joke, again. No, so, uh, so I, I would like somebody to look at, you know, how Dyton has Route one thirty-eight running and how things are set up, what services at different locations, if we could do things better. Cause you, we all know that, that we can do better with pedestrian crossings and intersections. And, and it's not just focused on one thirty-eight. I mean, things right off of one thirty-eight, like Center Street, you got Main Street, you got, you got Sweet Stone, you've got New Library, you've got all these different things we have, really nice things we have throughout all of one thirty-eight. But it's not really a cohesive plan, right? It's not, somebody's thinking, somebody, there's nobody taking a step back going, all right, this is this corridor, it's, it's a major thoroughfare through the town of Dyton. Is anybody looking at how this can be laid out more efficiently, more effectively for the residents and for people visiting? So we asked Serp Ed to, uh, help us figure out how we can do that for Dyton. Right? And, um, got a gentleman here, Robert Cabral, who works for Serp Ed. And, uh, he put together an estimate for us, that's in your packet, of what, what that study would cost. So he's, he's helping us with a community one-stop program grant request. And so he's looking at a few different resources. Uh, the whole thing comes out to be, uh, close to a hundred K to put this study together. Uh, but the intent is that it will cost us the town of Dyton nothing. So looking at money for, uh, the community one-stop, looking at DLTA, and also looking at some of the hours they have uh, with their, uh, technical support to be able to cover that work. So in your, in your packet, there's a big table there. Table is up on page.
It's the last page.
It's the last page.
It's hard to read.
Yes, it's super hard to read.
I'm sorry, I should have enlarged that.
Object administration, kickoff, regular check-ins, literature review and data collection, analysis and accreditation, PD engagement and uh, report writing and final deliverables. And it's got the bottom line there. Ninety-nine, ninety-nine five. I don't know if that noise happens every once in a while.
It's that star on, up top, whatever that star is.
I was trying to.
That's blinking.
Transcribe the text.
I don't want to.
All right, so he's got the whole thing laid out here with the schedule. This is, this is what the study would be, but right now, we're, we're not doing this work. He's trying to gather the funding to, to fund.
Where would they get the funding, Jeff?
So three sources, it would be, um, so our lab is looking at, um, sixty K from.
Community one-stop.
Community one-stop, which is a grant program, uh, Serp Ed contribute thirty K from the DLTA and, and also eight K from the, uh, MA hours. I, I think it's, I don't know what that means.
Probably allotted hour, uh, per town.
So they're able to cover the, the entire cost of the study with, uh, no cost, direct cost of the town of Dyton. So that's.
Oh, one-stop decisions made around the December timeframe? Is that when they make them? Like, to approve one-stop?
He said it's like, uh, the end of May. The applications are due.
Oh, the applications do, but then the approval of yes or no for the one-stop.
It's, it's December.
It's December.
It's December, yeah. So, uh, so he's, right now, he's putting the application together. It's gonna run by Ralph and I and then submit it on behalf. Um, and that's, we're not paying them for that. It's part of the, their technical support that they're providing us. Uh, and if we do get picked up on that, then we'd know in December. If we don't get picked up on it, then we can try again next year. It's not, it's not something we're trying to turn around and do anything with right now. I, I really wanna get a plan together so we can use it for the next decade or so when we're trying to lay things out. And, um, we don't have a town planner, but we do have a planning board. So I'm kinda hoping we can help guide some of that development. I don't know how much influence we have now. A lot of the stuff just comes to us. Uh, but it, it would help maybe if we start advertising, hey, this is the plan, this is where Dyton wants to go. It might spark the interest of some developers to come along and, and come up with ideas. Uh, and then, you know, at that point, that would have, you know, we'd definitely benefit, benefit from that. Cool?
Well, I read that one forty plan.
Yeah.
And I read all the comments. And everything about the bike lanes, nobody wants that. And, and it's just a waste of road space. But it's a lot cheaper for the state to paint the line down the road and say that's for bicycles instead of putting in sidewalks. Sidewalks cost more money.
Right.
But sidewalks could be used.
Yeah.
Bike lanes, especially up and down one thirty-eight, bad. Right? The, and, and there's a new state law that says you have to stay four feet away from a bicycle or a person walking or somebody with a stroller. So that puts you into danger by crossing the, the yellow line. Cause you need to be four feet away. And there's bike lanes all over the City of Taunton and nobody ever sees a bike on them. So I'm all for doing a plan, but no bike lanes. And I, I, I think they're, you know, they're meant for the bigger cities.
Well, my, my concern with just doing the, the bike lane on the side, like, like you mentioned, is, uh, a lot of times cars spend a lot of time in there anyway.
They should. Stay a road. They pay excise tax.
Well, just putting a white line, white line down and saying that's a bike lane is, is not a bike lane. To me, that's not a bike.
They put a little bike picture there.
I understand, but, um, the, the best way to get hit by a car on a bike is to get in a bike lane that's just a white line.
I've been hit by cars on bicycles.
Yeah, so, um, so I, I like when it, i- if you have the room, having an actual separate lane for a bike or some other, some other more active means of separating cars from bikes. Putting a white line down to me is, it's pretty dangerous. And it's not effective, so, you know. It, it, a plan doesn't mean, i- if they come up and say, hey, we got this great idea for all these, all these things, that doesn't mean that has to be the direction we go.
Well, just so you know, Serp Ed has one guy that all he works on is bike lanes. So they push that stuff.
Okay. This is not the bike lane guy.
Maybe he, hopefully he's the sidewalk guy.
Might be the sidewalk guy. All right, so that's.
I like sidewalks.
Uh, just the question, you know, the answer is, you know, during most of one thirty-eight.
Sidewalks. Somerset does beautiful sidewalks.
Property the town owns on either side? Like, does it extend rather?
You come off the Berkeley Bridge.
Just like two feet, like eight, eight, ten feet.
Beautiful.
Well, it's, it's a state road.
But the, obviously, you know, the town, or maybe the state that owns the property, you're saying?
I have no idea.
Okay, just a factor.
Should be.
Yeah.
This railroad track that was put, that was abandoned about ten years ago. Why isn't that a nice bicycle path?
Well.
Walking trail.
That's actually in the process right now.
Really?
Yes, it is.
There you go.
There you go. I mean, I'm glad you brought it up.
I like that one, Jeff. Jim, I'm in agreement with that.
Department of Conservation and Recreation is actively doing that.
The rail trail.
They're gonna be building a fishing pier down the road.
I think that's, that would be excellent because half the work is already done.
That's part of the phase two of the, of the Taunton River Trail going through town of Dyton.
I mean, that can go right into Fall River, it can go and, you know,
Yep.
Pick up other trails and stuff like that.
We wanna get it over to the, all the way to, the, all the way to Somerset. Then it can tie into the SCBA, which is a different trail in Somerset that ties into Fall River. It goes all the way to Fall River and then crosses.
You're the man, you're the man.
Crosses, uh.
Okay, let's keep moving.
And he gets it, picks up the Taunton lane and continues.
And did he's on into Bridgewater and all of that good stuff.
All that good stuff. So that's, that's Serp Ed. Uh, Mrs. Isu Day will now pr- provide the, uh, permitting and compliance team report. Back to board. Carrie?
So we had a meeting, we had two meetings. We had one on May thirteenth and May twentieth. Uh, pretty general. We had an individual appear, appear seeking allowable options for a property located on William Street and what applications would be required. So he was specifically, um, started as general and then he started leading towards retreat lots. So just gave him the process on that. Um, conservation agent provided a status update on various applications and violations that are before the commission. And I provided the same, uh, pretty much a status update, pretty much, you know, like where we are with the current applications that are on file right now. Um, and then we had some zoning violations issued to an individual who had some mobile home trailers and a new structure without a building permit. But the status update on that is the property owner is gonna go back to making it compliant. He's gonna remove the shed and, um, or the structure and the mobile homes. And then we received an abutment complaint, um, about work being performed in an abutting property. But Lisa went out, she did an inspection and didn't find any violations they were within what they were supposed to be doing. Um, and then the other thing, um, it's pretty much it. It was pretty general. We haven't had a lot to talk about. Um, so just the last thing is that, um, on this past week, we had an individual who came in without contacting anyone about being on the meeting, said he was referred by someone. And our concern with that is, um, we almost didn't have the meetings, we really didn't have much to talk about. So a lot of times what happens is if we have a packed meeting and we're not required to post, um, sometimes if we have nothing to talk about, we don't have a meeting. And we would hate for someone to come to the meeting and find out that we weren't having a meeting. So if anyone refers someone to a packed meeting, we just respectfully request that you have them contact me and I'll make sure that they will be informed whether there's a meeting or not and confirm it and put them on the agenda, so to speak.
Um, although you may not post with the town clerk, I do see it appearing on the list of town meeting events.
I did, yes. And that was at the request of the selectman, so that we can put it on there. And I do have it on there. Yes, so they know it's there. Um, but there, I do have a little, like disclaimer at the bottom, just saying, please, you know, anyone interested in sitting down, please contact me. So, um, yeah, and that's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, next item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes for May seventh, twenty twenty-five. Can somebody please make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
May eighth, second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Mrs. Isu Day, is there any correspondence?
There's no correspondence.
Any additional public input? I don't think anybody's here. Uh, or none. Can somebody please make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.